All right, I'd like to call our special meeting of the AVON Board of Education to order at 7:01 Apple Time. Before we start, I'd like to read our mission statement since this is what really drives our budget decisions. Our mission is to inspire each student of joy and passion for learning and commitment to excellence, personal integrity, and social responsibility. Would you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just so some are aware, we are having one of our board members call in, so we have a cell phone that we're going to see how this goes tonight, but it's nice to see all of our administrative team with us tonight. We're actually beginning with a section for communication from the public, so I'm not sure if there's anyone here that has any comments that they would like to share with the board at this time.
Am I the only one?
If you are, please come on forward and say your name.
I'm Lisa Semenera. I'm actually here tonight representing as one of the representatives for FAIN, which is the Friends of AVON Music Education. And I just briefly wanted to kind of stop by and try to begin to cultivate a relationship with the board, because I think it's important that you stay abreast of the music education program in this district, as well as the sports and everything, to keep the district well-rounded. Our latest accomplishments that we're in the process are just about very close to finishing the band show here at the high school, which is used by everyone in the district. We recently became, very recently, became 501(c)(3), and our long-range plan is that we're in the process now of raising money for our marching band, which we will keep you abreast of as we continue to make progress in that area. I just stopped by tonight because it's our understanding that at the middle school, currently, there are stipends being given to the choir and to the band, but there is to the smaller sections of the choir and the band, areoso, and then... But there is a small group in the orchestra that's been going on for more than a year now, probably two years, and that is not funded at all by a stipend. So I wasn't sure if you were all aware of that. I wanted to make you aware of that and see if that can be related. That's it.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then I guess we will move to discussion regarding the proposed 2019-2020 budget. So Dr. Kern, hold on.
Thank you. And I just want to mention, we are working on a stipend committee right now, review as a part of negotiations, so all stipends that are paid out in the district are currently under review. So we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to move here where I can work with Heather. Yeah, let's go. So in the interest of efficiency and transparency and trying to be proactive with... You're right, I'm going to try to slip her. What I know inevitably would be questions regarding the numbers. Remember, at our previous meeting, we talked a lot about what was needed in the district and where we were looking to fund and reduce as a big picture. And so I wanted to take the liberty tonight of still having a workshop model where we can have a dialogue, but putting some pieces together that are able to show the board a big picture and the public. So as you know, you have your binders that have line by line by line, which is an accounting of every penny in the district, but that can also be very overwhelming to sift through when you're trying to match up object codes to what that really means. And so one of the things that I thought would be helpful to us would be to do an overarching summary, so you could see in every area what the exact dollar amount in 1819 was, is, and what we're proposing in 1920, what the dollar amount variance is and what the percentage variance is. And then I can speak to those highlights, kind of highlights, in those areas where you see larger variances. Some of this, of course, we already discussed, but you'll see it more in terms of the number tonight. So if that's okay with you, that's how I thought we'd at least start, and then we can stop. You can stop me anytime, and then we can stop and ask questions back to specific line items and so on if they're not answered here or something doesn't make sense. So as I mentioned, this is a summary. We call it an object summary, and if you look in the binders, you see that everything has financially an object code. So for example, 100 is salaries. No one really needs to know that, but that's how you match it up. So for example, these are the eight lines that everything in the budget falls under in one way or another. Salaries, benefits, purchased services, property services, other purchase services, general supplies, utilities, equipment, fees, and memberships are the overarching descriptors. Where we left off last time, as you know, was a 1.9% increase. And if you look down in the final column to the right for the percent variance, you start to see the big picture of the budget drivers as a whole. So to be clear, what that reflects is, so in salaries, the dollar amount that is a variance, that is a positive variance, in other words, it's more than it was last year, $707,911.69. So the total salaries of everyone who works in the district in the proposed 1920 budget are up $707,000 or 1.95%, just under 2% increase in salaries. A little over 4% in employee benefits. We've reduced the purchased professional and technical services line by just about 15%. Our property services are up just over 2%, and you see the rest of the idea. So I'll go line by line, basically, of these summary from here on out. So again, this just gives you a different way of looking at it. You see how our drivers parcel out, and I think, as we mentioned last time, we're doing pretty well as a district when we've now gotten, you know, our salary is at 62%. When you're talking about an organization of this size, oftentimes you'll see that being an 85, 80 to 85% of the budget. So speaking of salaries, these are, again, Object 100, these are the categories for every salary in the district on the left. No matter what role you fill here, you fall into one of those account descriptions. So certified administrators, for example, is... Well, here they are. Here's most of them here with us tonight, and thank you for being here, and all of us. So it's everyone from Central Office that's certified and everyone from a building that's certified. So you see a 7.9% increase and go, oh my goodness, what happened? What happened is 125,000 of that is us moving a salary to this line from other places in the budget. So our program director, in previous budget years, her salary was parceled out between the five buildings. That makes it hard for accounting purposes. It made more sense to put her in the certified administrator line, she's a certified administrator. So $125,000 of that, $158,000, simply moving the salary into this line and taking it out of all five schools. The other piece of the variance is due to variations in the hiring. We have, as you know, we have another position. We have our human resources director at Central Office now, so that's a small piece of it. Another piece of it is, as you know, we made the 12-month position at the high school from the assistant principal, and when we hired the assistant principal, there's a difference in the salary step there from the previous person, so some of it was budgeted, but not the full amount. So that, we put that together, and that's the other, about $23,000 of variance in this line. Our teachers, you see that the percent there is actually 1.82%, which again, when you look back at how we were able to bring in this budget at the number that we were, this is where we had to look closely and do some of the work that we did to mitigate some of the impact of the overarching salary increases. That said, and we've said this many a time at our finance committee meetings, we were very careful in the year that we're living in with attempting to hire in the dollar amounts that we had budgeted. So that's also why a little bit of the time adds up every time you're hiring someone. We were trying to stay at what we had budgeted or below, and we were lucky in this year and thoughtful, and we were able to do that. Our custodians, this is as a result, as you know, of the contract that was just finished. It's actually a 2% increase in salary for custodians by the new contract, but remember, we put up our licensed maintainers, 2.96% to account for the fact that they are doing licensed work for us, and they actually save us money in the long run on contracting out services. So that's where that 3% increase comes from. Our nurses likewise, they're a small part of the overall salaries in the budget, but this is all nurses, and we just renegotiated salaries with them. And this was a bit of an equity raise for our nurses too, in the sense that, as you know, they have historically been pretty underpaid, and we'd rather keep the nurses we have on staff than contract out services, which is about $300 a day, generally speaking, when we have to do that. So huge money savings to pay ours instead of paying out. And their raise was 2.5%, but that 3% I believe also includes the coordinating nurse. Correct. And we had a change, that's not in this line though, that's in the professional services position, right? Okay. So our paraeducators, this is a 4% increase. This is actually mostly due to needs. Students coming in with different needs, we do our best to budget forward for them, but it happens, it changes, and we're living in that this year, and so we've projected it forward. The actual salary increase is only 1.5%. The rest of that variance that you see is the addition of, I believe, maybe three paras. Secretarial union, as you know, we made some reductions, not to individuals, but to the positions we had in the budget from Central Office, so that's why you see a piece of that going down, even though it's not dollar amount that large at $12,000. You see it's a 1.3% increase, and that includes their wages. The tutors and the teaching assistants that are out in the buildings, we are not reducing them or our services. What we're doing is, you see that $70,000 reduction, that is the salary of approximately three tutors put on grant funds, and that is an appropriate use of both state and federal grant funds. So the state funds, don't get nervous, because we never know what grants we'll get from the state, but these specifically are related to our choice funds. So Sheff versus O'Neal funds that we get to take in to Hartford students, that's a piece of this, and the rest is related to Title I and Title II. We touched on this the last meeting. These are certainly budget drivers that we don't have a lot of control over, except in our negotiations when it comes to things like health insurance, and we've done a great job in implementing our HSAs and in negotiating fair contracts for insurance for our employees also. So we've had a, we've been lucky, we've had a good claim history again. Hopefully next year not see her saying something else. So there's only a 2.5% increase to the health insurance. You see there's, it looks enormous with the 35% increase to the administrative fees, but the reality is it's just broken out differently for us this year, and that's not a budget impact, it's that line. Want to say anything else about that? Workers' comp, again, the policy went up, so it's an 8.5% increase. I mentioned this last time, our pension plan, this is determined by actuarial projections. We don't have any control over that. We need to increase our contribution 9% or $63,000. Our annuities, this is what the board pays in for annuities, this is not the employee contribution. I make a contribution to my own 403(b), and so do many of us here. This is what we pay on behalf of all of our employees that get annuities, all of our administrators and anyone in the district. And that number is down by quite a bit, and the largest reason for that, and we've talked about this before, is a difference in the way my salary is paid. My annuity is not as large as the previous superintendent, so that's part of the reduction, and then there's some addition with the contracts, but that's where they landed, $25,000 less. Post-retirement benefits, this is something we talked about last time too, and again, no control over that, the $25,000 just about increase, and that, again, is a number that's given to us by the town.
Bridget, just go back to the...
Mm-hmm.
So the administrative fees, you said it's offset somewhere. Where is it offset that we would see?
It was in the health department.
It used to just be in the health.
Okay, so that was...
And I've been trying to do that as we've become more active with the town, billing and sharing about it.
Sorry, I wasn't clear about that. That's what I'm saying, we broke it out from that line this year.
Okay, and it was offset from somewhere, I wasn't sure where it is.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Object 300, our contracted services. There are a lot of items that are in here, because it's basically anything we pay for that's outside of the district in any way. So for example, if we are paying for outside providers, for professional development at any point, to come in to work with our teachers, or our teachers, or non-certified staff who are going out for professional development, most of it comes from this line, not all of it. So you see a significant reduction here. We've already spoken about this. We have taken out $30,000 for the Confident Classroom, otherwise known as the consultant work with Allison Zamuda. Remember, I mentioned, we may still do a little bit of work with her, but we will be using grant funds if we do. So there's $30,000 removed there, and there's another $35,000 removed for capturing kids' hearts. Why doesn't that add up to $65,000? Because we put money back in, because we still need to keep working on our curriculum ourselves and working on our school climate and our school culture and moving things forward there. So it ends up at a $45,000 variance, we put 15 back in. The world language, that is the Confucius Institute, that is a $100,000 reduction, is the reduction of three teachers. I don't have the MOU signed still at this point with the union, but I have spoken to the AEA president, and I'm comfortable leaving this the way that we have it, that we spoke about last time, maintaining the program the way we have it this year. So we're leaving that alone, but that's the $100,000 reduction.
Do you expect that MOU would be signed before the town meeting?
I asked that it be signed before Tuesday night, when you have to go around this budget.
Thanks.
I knew you would want that in our hand.
Thank you.
Substitutes, we spoke about this last time. Number one, our certified staff attendance has improved over the last couple of years, particularly in the past year. And also, as you'll hear me say like a broken record tonight, a lot of this is Heather's work really going over at least three years' worth of expenditures throughout the budget trying to properly account for it. So if she went through three years and saw that that was the dollar amount and we were moving money, transferring money out of the line later because we weren't using it, should reduce them conservatively, because they're always a gamble when you're trying to reduce the line, right? But we've seen this drop for the past three years. So part of this is the need for less subs, and part of this is just trying to be true to the actual expenditures. So that is a large decrease of nearly $100,000. Information technology, that's a small amount of $6,300. Remind me what that was.
Contracted services.
That's right. We reduced our contracted services with our outside provider that has helped us quite a bit in lieu of having all of our positions filled. We have the IT firm that works with us at times, we have someone here working with us right now, although we have a network coordinator. Athletics, that $11,000 reduction, don't get nervous, Tim Phelan, I'm not sure that you had seen this, is officials. And that's not because we need less officials, that's again an example of Heather going through the budget and seeing that we had over-budgeted for officials in the past, and that's still a conservative reduction, because we are keeping an eye on the fact that the turf project and the movement and so on of the games. So it's not a lot of dollars, but you see a nearly 21% decrease. The snow removal, this is a 100% increase because there wasn't $14,000 in this particular line. One, remember, I mentioned at the last meeting that we added in seasonal help, not just for the summer, but for the winter also. But we still, and it hasn't happened to us yet, but worst possible scenario is we don't have enough people to shovel and plow, and we have not had a great experience getting central office done, because we need to focus mostly on the schools. So this is contingency funds. This is $14,000 of in case we need to bring a contractor in to do central office, because we know that's a possibility.
Can I ask a question though?
Yes.
So, let's see how I can phrase this. I understand though, our custodial staff and maintainers have provisions in terms of their salaries when they're called in for snow removal and so forth.
Correct.
So my understanding was is that we're supposed to use the union labor for that purpose.
Yes.
Why then set aside an additional $14,000? Are we expecting the union not to give them, do the tax?
They have not been able to do it. They have not, in the past winters, been able to do all of it the way we need it to be done. And the town contracts out this service for their central office, so we were trying to follow suit there because...
So our maintainers are going to do...
Even with the overtime funds.
Our maintainers are going to do the building, schools?
Yes.
And then the idea is that we're going to, if we have to, the $14,000 will go via the town for their contract service to clean out central office.
We are looking to partner with them to use the same people. Yes, that was part of the conversations we had with the town. Because we're closer to the town buildings. So if we partner with them to contract the same service that does their lots, we'll save money, because all they have to do is come across Hartford.
To be cheaper than us using our current contracted labor?
Could.
Depends on the amount of snow.
Depends on what the winter looks like.
Okay.
These are the non-exciting utilities, and again, this is a reflection on looking over three years and leaving some of them flat, because we've been over-budgeted in some areas. And we're working hard to bring this budget lower, so this is what we chose to do. Heather and I had a go-round about telephone, because after you look at these numbers for as many hours as we did, it wasn't coming quickly to me that that $151.10 was simply the rounding up of the telephone service to the $88,200, so that it was even. And I kept saying, and for God's sake, why are you taking it down $151.20? And we like cut out one, you know, one telephone? No, she just rounded it and kept it static. Telecom, that $10,000 is a reduction related to the budgeting that we've done for years related to the CEN, the Connecticut Education Network. You know, we've been waiting for the bottom to drop out of that, and so we've been conservative in keeping money in this line in case we have to take more of that responsibility on ourselves with the networking. We have not had to do that yet. The legislature looks as though it's going to keep it in place. So again, being conservative, but we reduced that line for those services by $10,000. Natural gas, we know the price will be up in our usage. On the flip side, the electric is again another example of Heather looking over three years' worth of trends, and you know our electric has been going down due to some of the improvements that we've made.
On the telephone, only because you brought it to our attention, it's actually an increase, but only because this is published enough for people to see.
Yes, it is an increase. Excuse me.
No, no, you read what's up there. That needs to be corrected, because it says minus 151.
Yeah, that's right, Heather.
It goes up to 151.
Yes, thank you, Jay. So I said it correctly, but it is up there wrong. Yeah, thank you. It is an increase to round out the number. Correct. We'll fix that, because I do, I would like this to be published, so people who aren't here can see it. This is where we get into some of our special education costs, but also our transportation, because they're linked in many ways. So our special education tuition, in other words, the dollar amounts we pay when we need to educate students outside of the district entirely and/or with supplemental services because of the student needs. You see that as a very large increase in comparison to what we've reduced in many other areas, but it's for exactly the same reason I already told you. Heather looked back over six years' worth of what we actually spent, and we have been going above what we had budgeted, number one. Number two, a lot of these private facilities that unfortunately aren't regulated in the way we might like by the state, don't necessarily engage in fair practices when it comes to tuition increases. They're not held to the same sorts of standards state or local schools are. So Heather budgeted a 6% increase so that we would be on the safe side of this, because the last thing we want to do is not have enough money in these accounts to pay for those students. And that does include, though, on the flip side, in the escrow account, remember, we reduced it, $100,000. So if you, the real increase that she projected is $344,000, but she then reduced it by the $100,000 because of how much we have in the escrow account.
I think I'm just troubled when I look at the Sped Summer Program Transportation.
I'll be right there.
Oh, sorry.
So another, this is a large number, right? We nearly doubled it, well, more than doubled it. So we went from $50,592 to $115,000. More than one thing happened here. Number one, we've had a change in student needs. We're trying to run the program more efficiently, and that's pretty much the extent of it. We have, we have to run four, we've got to run four different bus runs, from what I understand, for the program, for the number of students that are participating, and we hadn't been doing that, we hadn't been accounting for those costs. So just like the Sped tuition being up, the reality is, we have spent more money in transportation for this extended school year. That's what this is, programs. So we're trying to make sure that it's clear that this is more like what we expect to spend. We have spent it.
Because I think, because we were given also two years back, so for two years back, it's been about that $50,000 number. So my only question is, we've been above that every time, and it just hasn't been budgeted for, so this is more effective based upon student need, IEPs and so forth?
Special education is becoming more out of not only their summer transportation line, but out of their regular year, special education lines to make up the difference.
Right.
And we had a discussion, it's like, that's not the way we need to be doing it.
No, so we've made up the difference, but why not try to put it...
So we've actually had the students, we've just now budgeted more appropriately based upon the IEPs we have in place.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The athletics transportation, the increase here is due to the turf project, for the most part. Obviously, some piece of it is, again, bus contract going up, I believe it's 1.774%. Our bus contract is up in the coming year, so anywhere you see a transportation increase, 1.774% of it is due to the contract, but we are looking at an 8% increase. We've got to bus practices and games away while the turf is being completed in the spring. Now here's, this is a huge object code, right? Because this is everywhere but the kitchen sink, when we talk about instructional supplies, general supplies, and textbooks. And you see, it's a very large, it's a large number to begin with, it's over $2 million, but it's a large reduction of the $107,000. And this is, I'd say it's twofold, but it's multi-fold, but I'll speak to two pieces, and I'm sure you might have some other questions related to these particular lines. So number one, for example, textbooks are in this line. We are right now at a point in the evolution of the district that we don't have any textbook requests. We've gone through the cycling of curriculum, and there may be, most likely, next year when I stand here, you'll see an increase here, because we're going back through the curriculum again. But our curriculum review and revision cycle of all the core content areas, the first run of it at least is complete, and so we've provided textbooks for everyone that needed them. Does that mean that everyone loves the textbooks that they use? No, I'm sure, I know they don't, in some cases, like the textbooks that they have, and I'm sure that some of you have heard that in certain cases. But nonetheless, for what we've put in place right now, we have purchased the textbooks, number one. Number two, you know, we've implemented the Words Their Way program, we talked about that at the last meeting, that's one of our district initiatives related to literacy. At the end of last school year, remember, we had hit the 4% threshold of seats for open choice students, so we were able to get the additional funds at the end of the year. Those funds, remember, can only be spent on certain things directly related to students, like instructional supplies. So at the end of last year, when we made those transfers into these lines, we bought some of what we needed for this year and next year with that money. So for example... So for example, there's $21,000 that we spent in an instructional supply line that is number one, all the materials related to Words Their Way, it's about $16,000, just over $16,000. And there's another $5,000 that is the second assessment related to it. What else is it called?
Benchmark assessment.
Benchmark, yeah. It was a benchmark assessment, but it's the second one. So you put both of those together, that's a $21,000 expenditure we were able to take out of here because we purchased it with our state funds at the end of last school year. And we were able to roll it out sooner too. This year, we aren't going to be that lucky. So we're working very conservatively with this budget because we have not met the 4% threshold with open choice seats. We were there at the beginning of the year, it went back and forth. We are at like 3.98%. And that .02% under four, they're not gonna give us the 4% money. So, good news is, we did it last year. Good news is, I think we'll probably do it again next year. But right now, this is where we are. So, number one, we didn't buy any major textbooks. Number two, we bought the textbooks related to the literacy improvements through last year's choice funds at the end of the year. And number three, this is the work of mostly the people sitting behind me and the staff in their respective departments and schools. Because remember, I said to you, when they turned their budgets in, as a whole, they were nearly $80,000 less than they were last year. Because we asked them to look very closely at all the supplies, at everything that was in the budget. And if they needed it, get it. And if they didn't need it, leave it out this year because we were trying to come in as low as possible. And they were able to do that. So, $21,000 of this reduction is that Words Their Way and the benchmark. And the other nearly eight, a little more, yeah, it was actually just about 80, is the schools.
Do you want us to address specific textbook concerns, or are we gonna have an opportunity to go building?
If you wanna stop right here, let's stop right here. And I'll answer the ones that I know off the top of my head, and I'll turn.
I just didn't know the format how you were gonna approach this.
Let's stop here, yeah.
Am I getting an opportunity to speak to the individual building principals, for example, about their specific budget line items? Or do you want me to address all my textbook concerns across all the buildings in the district at this point?
Let's just start firing them out. And we'll, and we'll see if we don't have them, and I think we have most of the answers, I'll turn to the building principals if we need them.
So it's gonna take me a minute, but, so we can just start with my first question then, because I just went in order that's in the binder. So starting with Pine Grove, I noticed in terms of just dealing with the textbook issue, we spent $8,000 for new world language textbooks. So I was curious what the $2,000 in the current budget is for? Is that designed for replacements, or are we adding more additional textbooks?
Where are you looking just?
Page 53 in the budget?
Is it English language arts?
I thought it was, I'm sorry. I have, it's language arts, I apologize. Language arts.
Do you have it Heather?
Right here.
Go ahead.
It's a combination of both, some replacement textbooks, but also when we wrote the English language arts curriculum previously, it had been an anthology. And we're moving more to, you know, independent, I mean, individual texts. So that we can do a classroom set, we can do different texts with different groups based on the same topic. So we'll continue as we refine our units to purchase a few more books for that, and also for our level literacy initiative. But we feel now that we have a nice selection of books, so we were able to move it from the eight down to the two.
And that's obviously in the same reason that we see the same item at Roaringbrook.
It's the same, at Roaringbrook and Thompsonbrook.
Wherever we could, we tried to equalize between Pine Grove and Roaringbrook. They did this budget together, for the most part.
Since, but, I don't, but, in terms of sticking with just, are we talking just textbooks at this point, or do you want me to do general instructional?
Go ahead, because they're all part of this object.
All right. Let me ask you, whereas, this would not include the co-curricular material, would it? That's still a separate? Okay. So, sticking with just the two elementary schools, I have questions regarding the co-curricular issues. I noticed that PGS requested an additional 2K for material, but there was no need, sorry, 2K for a stipend on an additional person, but no request for instructional materials, where Roaringbrook had the complete opposite. I was just, is there a discrepancy between the two co-curricular programs?
That's the community advisor stipend that we spoke about?
And then, and there's no additional resource that that person's gonna need?
No.
And then at Roaringbrook, the 2K for the co-curricular, it just threw me off that it was a...
Yeah, I think I can clear that up because I had been asked that once, all right. So, the other $2,000 that you're talking about, there's, the way that it lists it out, you see some of them say student activity. So for example, there's 2,500 correct at Pine Grove and 2,500 at Roaringbrook?
3,500, 3,500 for supplies.
For the supplies, it's 3,500. But the $2,000 he's referring to, I think is actually what we spoke about earlier today?
The...
For the community?
The $1,929.
Yes.
That's the stipend for the community that you put in there?
Yes.
Okay. But then at Roaringbrook, there's the $2,000 for co-curricular supplies, materials? What was my wording here? Co-curricular, excuse me, I apologize.
That's all right. I think, when I looked it up Jeff, I...
Oh, there was an increase in terms of the co-curricular activities, page 64?
Yeah, that's the...
That's, what's the difference there? What's the, the increase of $2,500 for co-curricular activities?
Let's look the same one.
Are you telling me about the salary or the actual supply line, which would be a 600?
Right here. Program function, co-curricular activities under general supplies, student activities, it's an increase of 2,500.
That's what I was...
Connections.
Right, that's what I said.
Okay.
Okay, so I was correct.
Okay.
So, in both schools, at Pine Grove and at Roaringbrook, we put $2,500 into that line so that we can fund the community connections. So, for example...
Sorry, I'm just getting the time, I apologize.
So for example, we're having a concert after school at Pine Grove, and our students are willing to stay through after school and not go home. They ordered pizza.
Okay.
All the, they need supplies related, it's any of the things we do related to community engagement. Not any, but many of them are in those lines.
Tell them something, so, Thompsonbrook, the increase of $2,000 in instructional supplies for science, I was just curious, if that's related to the NGSS?
Paper.
And the news, huh?
Paper.
Okay, what do you mean paper?
Literally.
Literally paper.
Broke out their copy paper between all of their departments, and they had previous, they budgeted about $900 for each department, and they're going through entire quantities of papers, it's about $2,000.
Now I could bet...
The thing I would have preferred the answer of is the NGSS.
Probably would have. I'm here to tell the truth. Do you wanna speak? No, I'm only kidding, don't speak to them. You've been at the job how long today? Do you wanna speak to the paper? And I'd be out on a limb by saying, it could be related to NGSS, in the sense that they do the labs and some of those pieces that, you know, the state puts out related to CMT practices and so on. And that actually truly might be one of the reasons the science department is using more paper. I actually did see them with those printouts the last time I was at Thompsonbrook, visiting, one of the classrooms.
Also with Thompsonbrook, I was curious about the language arts instructional supplies, drop of 21,000?
That's what I mentioned.
Which was?
Words Their Way.
That's Words Their Way. Oh, I got you. And then on the social studies, there was this huge, 46%, it's only $2,000 increase. But when you look at the expenditures from 1718, it was only $462, and now we're up to $6,000.
So, the English language arts, social studies curriculum, it's kind of a combined curriculum. This year they broke it out where it's like time for kids, and that went into the social studies line. So it was just a reallocation from one line to another, to better track where it belonged. But they, most of those costs were previously in the English language arts budget line.
I had a concern regarding the library media, a drop of almost $3,000 in terms of the supplies for books. I was wondering if the library doesn't need additional materials, or?
They went through the, we actually just talked about this last time I was there. The libraries were pleased to find out just how many books there were. I think we had even more than they thought. So they weren't requesting large amounts to replace. On the flip side, in library equipment, they were looking for some replacement of the terrapin box that they use. So you'll see a line where there's an extra $1,637, that's the box.
Great. If I can still have the floor. The middle school, similar question on their social studies textbooks. I think what my concern was is we just spent $50,000, and I assume that was on new textbooks, which makes sense. But then all of a sudden, we were budgeting an additional $5,589 in the objective line, I'm again questioning replacement. What is that for? Are we expecting a large amount of, or is this?
Jeff, PTO's a page you're on?
Sure, this one is on 96?
Thanks.
Sure.
So we pre, this is an example again, we pre-bought those last year with choice funds at the end of the year. And I think it was actually that we needed more books, am I correct? That the class sizes were...
The $5,000 is for replacement.
And for some additional...
Additional text for enrollment. And then we're also looking at maybe some of the non-fiction texts that support that curriculum, as we've done in a couple of the courses at the high school.
Page 97. I was curious about the increase in the technology supplies, the instructional related technology. It's an increase of $5,000. What are we getting that's new?
This was a program alignment piece, I believe, Doug?
Yes, this is for the, we're working really to align our tech ed program at the middle school with the high school. So we're taking the same software, which is an annual renewal that we have at the high school, and have new computers down there that we're using that software on. So it's a through line now from 712.
It just seemed like a huge jump though, and I think that's what caught my eye.
Oh, that's right, the world language lab had not been budgeted in there. And that's a cost that each year we have to, a maintenance license fee for that.
I'm just trying to stick with just the line item we're dealing with at the moment.
Well, so, I know another question that we had was related to the virtual high school.
Yep.
And that is reduced. That's, again, just looking at the way it has been utilized. We pay per class, I think it's $400 per class, another $75 if it's an AP class. There's a lab fee too that, I don't remember off the top of my head, maybe $85, $100, $0.50, something like that. But we've been, we took the number down significantly because of how it has been used. That doesn't mean we don't still want to grow that program, but the fact of the matter is...
Well, I think that was my concern, we have the program, and we have spent as a board, a lot of time talking about ways we can increase rigor and other academic opportunities. I know virtual high school has been a topic that's come up multiple times. That was my only other concern with that, because it looks like, I don't know, the expenditures were $6,000 in 1718, you know, to drop it so low? I mean, we not expect at this point going into this coming year, we're not looking to expand virtual high school options?
The number we have is still an increase over what was actually expended. So we expended, as you said, about $6,000, and then in the budget, we have about $8,800. So we're still looking to spend more, but not as much as we had budgeted year after year. This was another place we just...
We're actually only budgeting $7,000, so it's only a thousand...
It is seven?
It's at seven, so...
Sorry.
It's half of what we had in 1819, but it's a, it's a thousand dollars more than what we spent in 1718. That was my only, my point of concern with this, because knowing that we were hoping maybe to expand that program.
I'm hoping to. But I was also trying to reduce the budget where we could, and it hasn't been used.
All right, I think I'm good for at the moment.
On that topic, I want to say as a parent, I think I received my first email from the guidance department, so kudos to them, saying, "Hey, are you interested in an online course?" So I think they are trying to make sure people are aware of it, and that's nice, nice to get, have some feedback and for them to really actively reach out to people.
Thank you. Anything else about this piece? Like I said, there is a lot inherent here, but our goal was to maintain what we had, not go backward, make some improvements, and reduce what we could. There's one, there's one last line, I believe, right? So, this is a change from what you saw in December, where you see yellow highlights. So, athletics at the high school, the increase we had listed was $29,598. We are able now to back out, remember I said we'd be able to do this, but we didn't actually do the number at that point. Some funds related to equipment that's inherent in the turf project. So $13,598 worth of equipment is inherent in the turf project, we will now get it as a result. So we are taking that out of our budget. And that leaves the increase at about $16,000. And that is the mats and the weather covers that we need at the high school for pole vaulting. The technology leases, we discussed this already, that, you know, we've put more Chrome books in, the lease price has gone up, we already approved our contract through the town council, and that is the increase. So, as a result of...
Thirty seconds, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I heard you right, I apologize. That first line of 29,000, you're talking about that's gonna be anticipated supplies you're gonna need for the field?
So what's in yellow, the field supply number is coming out of that. You had seen 29,000 last. It's really going to be 16,000 when we take that 13 out. Because that equipment is in the turf project, and we had budgeted for it in case the turf project didn't pass.
Gotcha.
So, on the next page, you get to see where it comes down to. So you see on the yellow line, and again, I wanted this to be accurate, if it was online and someone was looking at it and not listening to the entirety of this, for example. You see, we put an asterisk there that reflects the reduction. And so we are now down to, we were at 1.98, and we are down to 1.96 tonight, after we took...
So there's 29,000 on 128, is not there, is what you're telling me, anymore?
Correct. When you look at this number right here, 36,680, $13,598 has been taken out. That reflects it being gone. In the original budget, I brought you.
Okay.
It was 29,000.
And that's, I apologize, it's late.
That's all right. Go back one more slide Heather, so I can show them something. Thank you. This is only athletics equipment, 29,598 included the turf equipment.
So, yeah, so if we don't need the turf equipment, then this is...
16,598. I'm sorry, 16,000.
So this number's no longer accurate that's in the budget proposal?
Correct.
That's...
This is now correct.
Thank you.
This is correct.
Thank you.
I should say, this is correct. On the last page.
Numbers are not my specialty, I'm sorry.
Okay. It's an acquired, it's an acquired habit I learned. So, again, here's where we are, here's the bottom line, at 1.96. Any other questions that maybe I didn't hear already?
While we're still talking equipment, Roaringbrook School had budgeted 5,495. I'm just curious what the equipment is, under, under school equipment?
Those are round tables for our children classes, and some tables for the back.
Great.
Thank you.
Are questions opened up for the whole budget now, or are we sticking?
Yeah, anything you want. I have some information related to athletics too, so I'll share that, but I wanted to stop and see if there are any other questions.
Go ahead Jeff.
Well, if yours is still, why don't we button this up?
With, with equipment, I'm good.
Okay.
I think.
I did, I think, you know, we've talked about this at a couple of budget meetings now. I'm always trying to understand the relationship between our athletic budget at the high school. I'm not so much sure about the middle school and what we are fundraising for. You know, what the relationship with the booster is, and what the parent input, you know, financial input has to be.
I had someone, I'm sorry, you know, one second, because I have this ready, but I think it got closed.
Bogdan, my question is, so first, like we had crew came up a couple of years ago, and it was very confusing, I think, to a lot of people about who was funding what parts. And I think it just benefited us to know how great, how, we're so fortunate to have three boosters, but we should be really aware of what this program's costing real, you know, real completeness.
So this isn't, forgive me, Jackie, because this is a document that I've been working from, it's not a slideshow, so to speak. Why isn't it coming up? So one of the things, I think, here's the, here's the overarching statement I can make, related to athletics. We believe as a district, and I'm pretty sure you do as a board, that if it's a requirement, at a minimum requirement to play a sport, we fund it. When we're fundraising, it should be the above and beyond things, right? So, and I'll show you what some of those are that the Booster Club fundraised for, for example, I have some of those dispersments with me tonight. But, you know, a good example, I think, is, you know, sometimes they'll have the, you know, the pink games for cancer, and they might fundraise by selling the extra socks. We're not requiring you to wear those socks, these are an extra fundraiser. Those won't come out of the athletic budget. Your child, let's say, plays lacrosse during the offseason, and so wants to have more than one pair of lacrosse shorts. Well, they're buying, they're buying another pair of lacrosse shorts, I know that's kind of timely, because we just talked about this. Another example, some of the kinds of equipment that are specific to students. So a lacrosse stick has to be the right size for a particular student, students buy their lacrosse sticks. A baseball bat, the weight and the size of it is specific to students, students buy those. And I know, like I said, I know this is hard to see, I'll try to increase it a little bit. We put, thank you very much Mr. Phylon, and of course, Mr. Shaw for helping me to put this together. A little bit of help from Mr. Medic also, who had some of the other national information from. And then we get real upset for someone to say this in public, because once you're no longer on the CIAC Board of Control, you don't want to talk about the fact that you were, where a lot of questions come, but between Mr. Phylon and Mr. Medic, we were able to put some of this together in a way that makes sense. So I can give you this, but this is the sheet that we put together for ourselves. So where you see in red.
Can you touch, I'm sorry.
Yeah, can someone help me out there, please? So we listed every sport on the left, and I'm just going to show you a few examples, so that I can hit the question you're talking about, Jackie. So the sports are on the left, so let's take, you see, one of the large ones that, yeah, let's look at hockey, because that's a large one. Can you just push that up a tiny bit for me, Heather? So uniforms, if it's in black on the sheet, the district pays for it. We should pay for it. You have to wear a uniform of jersey, short, and socks. And you have to have home socks, and you have to have away socks. I'll talk a little bit more about why that is in a second. We don't make those rules up, it's in line with both the CIAC and the National Federation of High School Sports, which the CIAC ascribes to for the guidelines. So if you don't have matching jersey, shorts, and home and away socks, you cannot play on our hockey team. That would be a violation. So we provide those, if it's in black, we need to provide them. If it's in red, we don't provide them. The primary reason we don't provide them is, one, as I just mentioned, for example, if you go across, sticks are another example of something that are fitted to an individual student and their size in hockey. But on the flip side, you see mouth guards, chest protector, arm guard, elbow protector, and gloves. Of course, you need those items to play hockey, but they're considered more personal gear. One of the things that's kind of a guideline here is if it touches your body, most of the time, that's your personal gear. You pick, you buy that, we don't buy that. There is an exception there related to football, with how some of the pads are reconditioned, and you can see that here. Generally speaking, across the board, you see footwear is red, right? So whatever sneakers, or cleats, or ice skates that you wear, you purchase. Does that mean sometimes they maybe don't have a Booster Club fundraiser, for example, because they want to buy all the same sneakers for the basketball team? Yep, we've seen that happen. We've also seen it put out there that you get a deal, a lot of times it, it's beneficial to parents, for example, in basketball, to use, utilize the district's relationship with vendors, and buy all the same shoes, because they might get a discount. If the whole basketball team goes out, and every one of those students buys exactly the same shoes, which look nice as a team, they might save, say, $30 on a pair of Jordan basketball sneakers, as an example. So sometimes you see that, and I think sometimes people get confused, because they think that means we provided them. We don't, from the district budget. So this, as you can see, kind of gives you an example of that. Here's another example, I know at one point I was asked something about soccer versus lacrosse and the socks, right? Can you give me the other, I can show you an example from the National Federation, so you understand what I'm speaking to. Can you go to the next one? So these are pages out of the National Federation High School Sports Guidelines. So this, for example, is specific to lacrosse. There are guidelines related to the jerseys, the color, the trim, the numbers, how many inches tall they will be, the uniform shorts, that they will be uniform color, logo information, you see, they're very specific. This is what your uniforms have to look like. So if you want to play lacrosse, you need a jersey and you need shorts. Does it say anything about socks? No. So we don't purchase socks as a district, because they don't have to wear the same socks. And they, of course, they can, but they don't have to. Vice versa, if you look at soccer, very specific, what color the socks are when they're home, what color the socks are when they're away, what the jersey will look like, what the numbers will be, and you just kind of keep scrolling through, and you can get the idea. That the colors have to contrast in certain spots. That's still the uniform on the second page requirements for soccer. You get the idea.
I get the idea, I guess my, and I appreciate that, that's actually really helpful.
Can you go to the booster one too?
Because the question I would have is, if a coach says of, I've had many kids on different teams, and they all have different, you know, like if there's an offseason training, which I know that lots of teams might do, or is that, we're not funding that.
Nope.
So, so there is some leeway that a coach or the athletic director can say, we're not funding certain things, but it would be nice if the Booster Club or fundraisers could support the team to do this particular training, or whatever the event is. So we're fully funding our athletic program, anything above an extra is being funded by.
Boosters, PTOs.
Okay.
So here's an example of some of the booster dispersments. The major ones that I was able to find, again, thank you, Mr. Phylon, from 1819. So we got a fitness room upgrade at the high school, a team photo project for all the sports, microphones, batting cage, batting tees, dry erase board, quite a bit for tennis, portable drinking fountain for lacrosse, so you get the idea. These are all, these are all nice to haves.
So getting back to the other ones we just showed, which is very helpful. What, I think was black is required and funded, and red, which is probably needed for the sport, but not funded.
Correct.
What if a family faces financial hardship and needs certain equipment to play the sport, but it's not something that is provided?
So this is where the free and reduced lunch threshold kicks in, for those, you need them to play. So the pay to play is one thing, the fees are one thing. The other piece of it, for, let's just say, I want to play lacrosse, buy any cleats. And this is why we have the policy that we have. You need assistance, go to the principal, counselor, the athletic director, someone, and we make sure you get cleats. And there's a number of ways that we do that. One, we keep money in student activities funds to be able to do it. Two, we get donations of things. Three, we keep things from the past, so for example, someone had a bat that we hang on to, you know, we always keep a few bats on hand, we always keep a few sticks on hand. One way or another, sometimes it's a parent, sometimes we never know about it, because someone else's parent says, Bridget, I know you need lacrosse shorts, I'm going to buy them for you. But it is our responsibility if they have a doc, specifically if they have documented financial hardship, because we get federal funds, we have to provide necessary items. So to your point, the items in red, if a student could not afford them, and had a document, documented hardship, the district, in one way or another, whether it was through donation or our own funds, would have to purchase it. Does that answer your question, Jackie?
Yeah, it was really helpful, actually, to see that, to see what we are responsible for, what we're not. And all the wonderful things that the boosters have provided is really.
Absolutely.
It's nice to see it in writing, what all this.
And this is just one year.
Kind of go to.
Our fame boosters too, it just, the question wasn't about fame, don't be one. We're going to have a marching band up here sooner than later, right? That's going to be on the list. Any other questions, generally speaking? Go back to certain items, or pull the presentation back up, or wherever it is, I don't know, I'll pull it up.
Can you send that out to us, Bridget?
Oh, yeah, yep. And I just, we literally just finished some of this today, because I, you know, had some passing questions too, I knew.
I do have some additional ones, if anyone else on the board has questions.
I have one too.
Go ahead.
I'm listening, Jack.
It's Bogdan, actually.
Oh, Bogdan, sorry. I, I thought, I heard the voice, and I thought, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, so just to go back on the benefits slide.
Yep.
Just wanted to clarify the administrative fees.
For the health insurance?
Yeah, exactly. So the 35% increase, I found it, it's on page 147. So I apologize, because I saw it here, but I've been navigating this, and it was far back. So just, can you clarify again with the 35% increase, and maybe my understanding of it is different.
Heather, do you want to explain that again? Because maybe.
Because it could just be a terminology thing, so does it include stop loss premiums?
Yes.
ASL and stop loss fees. So traditionally, the Board of Education was not included on the actual monthly invoicing for that. Instead, we just journalized what we thought it was, in an attempt over the last, definitely two years, to be more accurate in what is Board of Education obligation, and how it relates to the health insurance premiums, whether it be stop loss ASL or the actual employer contribution. The town has been sharing monthly invoicing with us, started last year, I don't know if you recall, but during the Finial Assembly Committee, we had to do a transfer to cover those ASL and stop loss fees. So this budget is requesting a bit of a reallocation in addition to, in increase from what we're expecting from both the stop loss premium and the ASL fees, for that, we're just going to align to better reflect what we think it's going to look like in the next year.
So it could be just a terminology thing, what's our responsibility for reporting this? Because the admin fees versus, or ASL fees versus stop loss premiums are for two separate things, and I'm thinking, if others are seeing this as a public document, that may raise confusion, because maybe just the industry alone, the healthcare and insurance industry is big around here, so I think that's a term that people are, some people will be familiar with. Do we own the future, or now, think we should spike it out? Because, for example, admin fees should be going up with inflation, maybe 1%, 2% stop loss, it's a different altogether. What are your thoughts on how we handle that distinction?
We can absolutely separate that information, it would be an issue, which really how the invoicing is coming in now.
But this is a change even to the way the invoicing had been done. Because in the past, it, the invoice was, this is the total dollar amount, and remember, we go through the town for the insurance. So this is, honestly, the town has been great, we've got a little bit better of collaboration going right now, but the numbers have been broken out differently for us, and we wanted to reflect that for you too. This is the way they gave them to us, doesn't mean we can't present them differently also. So to your point, that is a good idea, thank you.
And the other question is about the substitutes, I think, so the decrease that you shared there. I just wanted to follow the rationale, maybe it's too early in the discussion to follow that, but I know there's a decrease, right?
There's a decrease, Heather went back over the expenditures for the past three years to look at the actual amount expended in each of those lines, number one, and number two, the attendance has improved. So we dropped that number down nearly $100,000 to reflect more accurately what we spent over the past three years.
That's the actual spend versus budget from last year.
Correct. And that's where a lot of these that you see, they're actual spend adjustments, over at least three years. Well, I, no, Jeff.
Go ahead. It took enough time so far.
That's okay. So I had asked, prior to this meeting through the chair, in previous budgets, we had been given an itemized listing of all contractual obligations broken down itemized, so that we could actually see, you know, where these purchase services were going. I mean, I can tell you, for example, that a couple of years ago, the line item for Kelly Services was around $414,000. So it's very helpful to see sometimes a breakdown like that, to understand where some of the money is going all the time, where the differences are. Is that something that we can get for this year as well?
So I guess to some degree, I was misunderstanding your, part of the reason I put this together in this way was so that you could see the 18, 19, you know, over proposed and the variance, because I thought that's part of what would be helpful. To, you're talking specifically just about contracted services, like any professional services that we use. So there is no report in the system that exists. Any report that's generated like that for you is a hand-on report, which would take us a considerable amount of time. We could project forward, we don't have contracts signed for the upcoming year at this, at this point, you know what I mean? We're projecting that some of those are, I mean, some we do, like the bus company.
Do we have one for this year?
Well, yes, we've done, some of these have been through the finance committee, when we've talked about our expenditures in those lines. So if we could probably revisit some of the finance committee pieces to pull some of that together. I don't think it impacts what we're looking at tonight, in the sense of, it'd be more about what we expended than about what we expect to spend to some degree. And that's why I had Heather go back over these for so many years and adjust them.
I think just historically, it's important to understand something like Kelly Services, where we've had such an important factor in the number of teachers not being, that's a huge.
So for example, that substitute line.
Right.
Is exactly what you're asking for.
Right.
That is the dollar amount we are expecting to spend with Kelly Services.
Do we know what the actual increase in, or the decrease in absenteeism was? 5% did you happen to know the way?
I do have that data, I would have to get it to you, yes.
Is it a decrease, sorry, is it a decrease, or is it? No, so it's less versus the budgeted, but it sounds like we've seen a lower number than it's budgeted for a long, for three years?
But also, the question I think Laura is asking is, when I spoke to, our certified staff attendance has improved.
Correct.
So it's twofold, it's how much have we spent over the past three years, and it's also, we have better attendance, so.
Can you go back to that number?
Yep. Yep. The reduction is just over $99,000.
So Bogdan, you're saying it's not, it's a reduction from?
So I think, so the first part, two parts, right? So first part is less absenteeism.
Right.
And the other part is what's been budgeted before.
For the past three years, we have not spent what we have budgeted.
Okay.
See it here? So in the budget year we're living in, we have $569,488.2. $2.2 came from another, but we'll just leave that. And we're looking at $470,335 for the coming year, based on prior three years expenditures, and the current year. So we look three years back at completed budgets, and we also say, okay, it's January, where are we right now? What, and what do we expect the rest of the year to look like? Let's project out the personal days that might be used, let's project out some of the sub-coverage that we might need for PPTs, let's protect it, project out some of the sub-coverage we may need when we work on curriculum.
And the book said, it's important to me, I guess, just to say congratulations to everybody who's making this wonderful change. I think for many years, it was a real point of challenge for us to overcome that, and this is a really exciting turn of events. So that's wonderful. But I guess, I know that we can just, just the highlights, I'd like to see the whole thing. What's our expected contracted services in total?
For Kelly Services?
No, you've got the highlights, this is on everything.
They're in the, but they're in the book.
Where?
So.
Okay, you can shut it later.
Okay, because, so for example, I can take you to the page where instead of having competent classrooms, we have other, you know, we have $15,000 in to be able to.
And it's just on that list.
The object, that's what you, you can match it up by object code, so I can sit with you and I can do that.
So you're asking, send it for a report of everything under that object code of contracted services?
Instead of, do you go by?
By each of the different budgets?
Exactly, just to have it all.
I mean, it's, you know, it's there, but it's.
You have to go through, you have to go to the schools.
It's embedded, it's embedded versus being able to just see it all.
Right. And so for the most part though, if you look at the dollar amounts, right? Unlike maybe what I think you're thinking about from previous years, there's not as much to dig for. So you look at professional development, in this line, we've got $50,000. So you're not going to see much in contracted services there. That's us putting aside money for what we might do when we haven't signed any contracts. That substitute line, that is Kelly Services, period. And the other piece where you would, you would see it...
I was just thinking about this. Where would I pull this back to?
Special education. So professional and technical services for special education. So nursing services for students with health needs. Additional...
Legal fees plus thing, I mean, there's a lot of stuff, healthcare.
Yep.
It's just... Translation.
Legal fees we reduced, actually, because we're not negotiating any contracts.
Excellent.
I think that is around 72,000, 75,000, am I right? Top of my head. She can pull that up. I was just looking at her. But I, I understand what you're asking, but I could show it to you, I just can't pull it out in the way you're asking for it.
Question on page 176, the SRBI. We can just talk through what, so it goes from $0 to $124,000?
Yeah.
I think it brings a bell to something we discussed a while back. I want to...
Program Director.
So that's that FTE?
Yeah. That removed, yeah. Did you have any other questions Jeff? I thought you still had something.
I got, I think I'm down to two.
Rock on.
In nutrition services, just a quick question regarding, maybe I'm not understanding the... So let me read my questions and make, make it more sense for me.
I make it, just for the record?
Yeah.
I make it my business to know all of this. Nutrition services is the spot I step back because you know they operate entirely on budget. So I know it as a whole, but specific questions I'm probably going to direct to Heather if necessary.
I think my question actually went back to, on the rental, right? I noticed, so we didn't have the 1819 budget information, but I was just curious, we had $30,000 in rental expenditures back in 1718 that we don't need now. I just want to make sure we have what we need to adequately feed our students, so...
I hope that's one of the first statements that we made through the Visual Security and Health and Department of Education budget process last year. We said that Nutrition Services beginning this year will utilize the financial database for budgeting and expenditures. That's why there's nothing in the budget column for last year.
Okay.
But there's expenditures. They've been using the database as all of the programs do, going through the PO process and whatnot. Two, as far as the rental, several years ago, we had our required state of Connecticut Act audit for the Food Services Program and we were cited for essentially charging our Nutrition Services Program rent. If you're on the board or if you ever watched anything that came out of that, that was a write-up and we've been slowly phasing that out and beginning next year, we're not going to be charging our own Food Services Program rent.
So we have all the equipment we need to provide meals for all our students.
This certainly will help us move a little bit more in that direction.
The last one, and I appreciate, I do appreciate everyone's hard work on this and I just, it's really clarification, so I understand what we're looking at. Under pupil services, under one, page 170, question regarding the contracted health services. I understand pupil services is an area that is often regulated by law. I'm just wondering if there's something we can talk to, at least general, without violating anyone's confidentiality of just wearing...
This is actually the doctor, the physician. You know, we had to, we had to put out an RFP for the district physician this year.
Yep, yep. Thank you, I appreciate it.
So that 127 SRBI came out of some other...
It was pieced out through all five schools. The salary was broken down in all five schools. And that's why, why be on a fishing expedition to find something or somewhere else for fixed up?
Well, thank you.
I just want to thank you for the presentation because I thought it was in a format that was very clear to follow and the way you arranged all the data and the numbers and explanation for every percentage and dollar was valuable for us to understand also.
Thank you.
Try texting. David, do you have any questions?
He said more.
He said no through text. Okay. I too appreciate all the hard work that went into this. This is an impressive binder and I'm grateful for how tidy it is and it just was easy to navigate and the summaries at the beginning of each section. It was obvious that it was a collaborative effort. Everybody was involved. Bridgette has kept us apprised of your conversations, which is really nice to hear. I've been doing this regularly so it doesn't feel so sudden to anybody.
We have nothing else to do tonight.
Awesome. Thank you for making the time to be here. We appreciate you being in the room with us too. I think that's nice. So I don't have any questions either because I think you've done such a great job of breaking it down for what makes sense to us and to the community and the fact that we're on such a tight schedule for getting this to the town. I really appreciate the speed and the accuracy of your efforts, so...
Thank you.
I am set. I don't know if anyone else has other questions?
If there's something I can be clearer on, thank you for bringing that up. On Tuesday night at the board meeting, we should take action on this budget because by our town regulations, it is a really fast turnaround this year especially. Take action Tuesday night, it's the 22nd. They want our finance department to have everything uploaded to them by the 25th. So the minute we walk out of here Tuesday night, the next three days will be spent trying to get all of this transmitted to the town. Just so you know how quickly that turnaround happens. I don't, we don't need a motion here tonight or anything if that's for Tuesday, but we will bring the clean version also with that reduction of the athletic equipment so that you're voting, you're voting on it separately from what you saw tonight without the asteroch.
I just want to take a minute to, I'm just so impressed with the number that you came up with. 1.96 is amazing. So thank you and I'm grateful for the fact that you really didn't look in your closets and see what you already had and were just looking for what you actually needed. And it just feels good to have this conversation because it feels authentic and real. So I'm very impressed with the number that you came up with and I'm excited to present it to the town, so...
Lot of hard work out in the buildings too.
Absolutely.
Just look back here again.
It shows for sure. Thank you Heather for all of your hard work too. I like your two cents every once in a while. That's how, after you have a couple of cents. Looks good. I didn't mean any of that, I meant the chip cents. I literally meant two cents. Yeah, that's right. Anyone else before we open up for communication from the book? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bridgette.
So here's the opportunity for those of you who have sat with us and to have any comments that you would like to make at this time. All right, then hearing none, I guess, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, Jay moves. Stand a second. Jason seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moves unanimously at 8:19, we adjourn.
Thank you David for joining us.
Thank you everyone.